I would like to call the City of Frazier Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting of April 7th, 2022, to order. And please ask that you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Go ahead.
Joseph, wake up.
Here.
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 Here. We have one member absent, and we have one vacant seat, but there are five members present, and there is a quorum to conduct business. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
May I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Menendez, seconded by Farina, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the formal statement by the Chair. Since we have no public hearing items on the agenda this evening, I am going to not do the formal statement, since those rules and regulations do not apply to the proceedings this evening. Moving on to the next item of business, old business. Is there any old business that needs to come before the Board? Hearing none. Next item is public hearings, and as I previously mentioned, we do not have any public hearings scheduled for this evening. So I will next move on to item seven, new business of the Board, candidate interview for the vacant Board seat. We have received, and you should have within your agenda this evening, an application from Mr. Michael Lessig for appointment or seeking appointment to the zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Lessig, thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
It has been policy with this city for a number of years that the Board, for which there is a vacancy, has an apt opportunity to interview prospective candidates before making any recommendation to City Council for appointment to the Board. We have a series of questions here. There are no right or wrong answers to them. We're just looking for your thoughts and ideas about the city. And I will ask the questions. If you do not understand the question or can't hear me, please let me know. I will try and clarify the question. And there may be follow-up questions from other members of the Board. So if you don't mind, I will begin.
Okay.
How long have you lived in the City of Frazier?
I have lived, can you hear me? I've lived in the City of Frazier since February of 1999, so that would be, I am told, is 23 years. I said 22 last week, and my wife corrected me.
Are you currently, or have you ever served on any other Board in Frazier?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Two more questions, sorry.
I'm sorry.
And how did you hear about the open position on the zoning Board of Appeals?
Okay, first of all, I served on the Recreation Commission for eight years, and I was the Chair of the Commission for four. And then I served, I served on the City Council, I believe, for six years, from November 2015 to November 2021. And through a posting on Facebook, I believe, there, I noticed there was a opening on the zoning Board of Appeals, and I felt that I have some qualifications that may be useful on the Board.
Have you ever appeared before the zoning Board of Appeals in Frazier or in another city?
No.
Can you read blueprints, both commercial and residential, and are you able to visit the property for which we have an application prior to the ZBA meeting?
All right, you like asking compound questions, so I always lose myself after the first part. My blueprint reading is basic. I think I used the term rudimentary when I was in the Planning Commission, but I was a draftsman back in the day. I am familiar with blueprints, and I am a quick study on a lot of things regarding ordinances and building and things like that. And the second part of your question was?
We...
Oh, can I, can I travel to sites? Absolutely.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Our meetings are typically held on the first Thursday of the month. Is there anything in your schedule that would prevent you from attending those meetings on a regular basis?
Not generally. The only, the only time that I'm usually gone in the first week of the month is July 4th, so that's, but I would make an exception if business was necessary.
Yeah, we generally will, will try and rearrange our schedule if the zoning Board meeting falls on the 4th and/or on the 3rd, because we know everything.
As I did, yes, we did on the Recreation Commission and the Council as well.
Yeah. We approve, we approve our annual, our annual meeting schedule generally in January, and that's certainly one of the things that we look at.
Attendance has always been a policy of mine. I think I missed one or two meetings in six years on the Council and very few as a Recreation Commissioner.
What do you hope to see in the City of Frazier five years from now?
In terms of development or in terms of the city as a whole? Okay, that's...
Your thoughts? What do you, what?
I would like to see, I've been a resident here for 22 years, 22.
23.
23. I told you. I'm sorry. And I've seen a lot of change, and I think the city could use, has some areas that are ripe for redevelopment. I won't get into specific areas, but I also know that there are some areas of open land, very, very little open land left in the city, and I'd like to see good decisions be made about that, in line with our zoning laws and, and if need be, this Board takes action when people ask for changes to those zoning laws. And I want to make sure that those things are done in the best interests of our community. What would I like to see? I want to see the city clean. I want to see the city look good, especially on our major thoroughfares like Utica Road. Garfield is coming up for redevelopment. I assume that some of those commercial properties especially would be possible targets of redevelopment. And so I want to make sure that we're making good decisions in the best interest of the city as a whole, not in the interest of any particular developer or economic interest of, my understanding of the zoning Board of Appeals is that one of the tenants of it is that you cannot make a decision based on economic hardship alone. And, and I, I have seen such an argument made, and I, in my Council role, we did a conditional rezoning for six, six lots over by my house, and I asked a lot of questions about that. And I wanted to understand the decision and why it could not, why we had to make a decision in favor of the petitioner. I ultimately voted no. I just wasn't convinced that enough effort had been made and that the city would have to change our, and bend that simply because somebody wanted to put six houses instead of four, or whatever the zone, the current zoning laws allowed. That was a long answer to a short question, but...
That's okay, I'm gonna ask a follow-up one. Anyway.
Please do.
You, you indicated that you didn't want to get into specifics, and I'm not trying to ask you for specifics, but in terms of your, your position or indication that there were areas ripe for redevelopment, would you, if I asked you, were those industrial, commercial, residential, could you narrow it down that way?
I got an idea. You can ask me a hypothetical. I had a lot of those yesterday. But in, let's take the industrial center for example. That industrial park was built in, in the 70s, in the 80s? My first job was at 14 and Grossbeck in a small job shop here. And there's a lot of those smaller, light industrial buildings that are zoned for one thing or another, and I think we need to look at some flexibility. The world is changing. And how can we make those properties attractive to new development or new investment? I'm open to ideas. And as far as residential goes, really, we have, like, south of my house, I live on 14 and Hayes, there's a large parcel, there's several acres of land that I expect at some point in time will be developed. And I just want to make sure we make wise decisions about that, and if something becomes, comes before this Board, that a good decision is made consistent with the goals and objectives of the city.
Briefly, why do you feel that you are qualified to serve on the Board, and why do you think that we should recommend for your appointment?
I've spent the better part of 16 years looking over our city charter, code of ordinances. I'm currently working on review and rewriting an ordinance in Pinckney, so I spend a lot of time deep in the weeds of ordinances, ordinance language, as well as I spend a lot of time on the state. I don't know what the name of the site is, but I looked, where I look up all the MCL codes and things like that, so. I'm pretty adept at that, and I try to answer, I always try to answer the questions before me and, and say, what don't I know, and how can I add information to it so I'm making an informed decision. I know water and sewer ordinances aren't exactly the things that come before this Board, but I think in many ways, reviewing precedent and what the law says we can do, what the law says we can't do, and then hopefully coming to a decision that is, again, best interest of the city. And I want to be fair to petitioners, too.
Mr. Lessig, you mentioned that you were currently working on an ordinance for Pinckney.
Village of Pinckney.
Do you, is that, is, are you serving on a board there, or is it for a work?
Good question. No, I'm, I'm actually doing part-time consulting work for a municipal finance firm, and I work on water and sewer utility rate studies, capital improvement plans, budgets, budget modeling, presentations before boards, and the ordinance review. I'm part of the team. I'm not, I'm not rewriting it alone, but I rewrite it, I look at things to make sure that they fit within the goals and objectives of the community we're working in, in terms of, are we treating each customer fairly, things like that? And whether the ordinance, most importantly, I think to this Board, whether the ordinance can be, what's the word? Whether the ordinance serves the interests of the community and it can be enforced, that's the term I'm looking for. Is there a loophole? Is there something we're missing that can, somebody can drive a truck through and then cause us a problem that doesn't, that we end up in court? I try, we try to avoid those kind of things, certainly.
That is the actual end of my questions for you. Do you have any for us that we can answer for you?
No, I think we meet on first, first Thursday of the month, when there's business before the zoning Board of Appeals. I guess the question would be, how does, when you get a request, how does the information flow work? Who is the, who provides, the petitioner provides their application, I assume? And if I'm not using the right terms, correct me.
Well, I, I think I have your answer, but the zoning Board of Appeals is, is staffed by the Building Department, so the Building Department basically prepares items for our agenda.
Okay.
So they do the, the research and prepare a summary of the request and applicable standards that would be applied to that. And then the information is provided to us. Generally, the report and the agenda are provided to us via email.
Okay.
About a week or so before the meeting, and then we get a paper copy that is delivered to us as well, so that we can have that if there are plans and so forth that we need to refer to as part of our meeting.
Okay. And then I, just to clarify, the, as, as it was explained to me by a former Council person, she explained to me that the zoning Board of Appeals is the only Board in the city that gets to break our own laws. And, and I thought that was a simple, simple way to say it.
We, we have the right to allow others to break our laws.
However she put it.
We are all very law-abiding citizens of the community.
The Board can't, yes, that's, that's, you give other people the right to variance.
I, I did not read the formal statement this evening, but it goes something like, "When there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier Code, the Board shall have powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the requirements regarding blah, blah, blah."
How, since we have a little time, I, how, what is the expanse of your power? You, you don't have, can you?
We, we have authority over the zoning Board, excuse me, the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And we have authority over the fence ordinance. We can't grant exceptions to the, the water sewer rates.
Yeah, no, those, that's...
We do have power in passing upon appeals. There are some restrictions and requirements and, and state law and/or case law that we have to follow in making those decisions, such as you referenced earlier, that the possibility of increased financial return shall not itself be sufficient to warrant a variance.
Mm-hmm.
Another line out of the opening statement. But, but once again, we have the ability to grant variances to any provision of the zoning ordinance.
Oh, the zoning, okay.
Yeah. It, we can also grant a use variance that has some different voting requirements and so forth, but to allow a use that is not generally permitted in the district. That is a rare circumstance, but it is permissible under the statute.
I, we did one, early in my tenure on Council, we, there was a special land use or something for the showdown inside car, what's the name of it? Showdown Auto? And I believe I voted on that, and I don't know why I did that, but it was early on, you know, the lawyers presented, and I, when I say I don't know why I voted on it, I don't know why it came to the Council instead of the zoning Board of Appeals, so.
Might have been a licensing requirement, I do not know.
Okay.
But as a, as a used car license dealer or something.
Oh, there was some very, there was some restrictions, vehicles inside, and you couldn't have cars on the lot and things like that. But anyway, that was a long time ago. I don't think I have any other questions.
Mr. Farina, did you have a question for Mr. Lessig?
Mr. Lessig, I see that you took the City Planner course through MSU.
Yes. Citizen Planner, I think it was 2019.
Yeah.
Yep.
What prompted you to do that?
Really? We had a, not really. The reason I took that was, we had an opportunity each and every year for a scholarship for that. And I was always the one that said, hey, we're getting a free scholarship, somebody needs to take that course. And I was having trouble getting people to take it, and then I, there was no one in 19, and I said, I'd like to take it. I, I like to learn things. Obviously, if I'm in water, in the water and sewer business, I didn't, it wasn't my career. I happen to like a lot of things about running a city, so.
Yeah, the other thing I, I know that you were the person who either made the motion for the city plan and the master plan, I know that you, you were seconded the motion to adopt the city plan, and that should be the basis of our looking down the line, where we want the city to go. You're very right, we give people the right to break the law, but they have to, and we have to be mindful that the way we do it is that it, it has to be a difference that, of something that runs with the land.
That runs, I'm sorry.
With the land.
With the land.
Because people can come and go.
Sounds like there's a bad... All right, so it goes with the land, which means that it is something related to that particular, it's not even, your decision does not affect every other parcel. And that makes perfect sense. Each decision stands on its own, related to that particular application, that particular...
When we make motions, we have to cite the reasons. It's never good to go to court, but that shouldn't be, denying something that says it's an essential community or, or a decent...
I've never made, I've always made decisions in the best interest of the body I serve or the...
Do I, 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 do[1358.12] And so the seat that you would be potentially being appointed for, that term would expire in 2023. So it's not a full term, but filling the unexpired term of the member that had to resign. Anyway, we will be making a recommendation, a motion to recommend the city council on filling the vacancy, and it is ultimately the mayor and council that has the final decision on that. Once again, they... It's been the policy of this community or the city to allow the boards to interview them. That is a courtesy, it's not a mandate.
I know.
And they can appoint anyone they wish to the board.
I...
I, once again, thank you for your attendance this evening and your interest and service to the city of Frazier over the years.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just I... My first, I have filled this unexpired term in each of... In my recreation commission and the council, and if I fill this one, it'll be a string of unexpired terms.
But it sounds like based on the term of service, you've had on most fours that your service extended beyond that unexpired term, so I appreciate that.
Yes. Yes, I have been reappointed, and the last thing I'll say is, the first time I applied, I waited a year and a half to be appointed to the recreation commission and was rejected several times. I keep trying, and I keep trying to help. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
If we're going to make a motion for recommendation, would that be under this portion of the agenda or would that be under unfinished? This portion, okay. Is there a motion to be made on recommendation of Mr. Lessig to the unexpired term of Mr. Hunt on the board? Mr. Farina.
I move to recommend Mr. Michael Lessig to the city council for... To complete the unexpired term of Mr. Hunt.
Second. Yeah, motion by Farina, seconded by Jimenez to recommend Mr. Lessig be appointed to the unexpired term. Is there any discussion on that motion? Let me just ask, and I should have earlier, are there other applications that have been... Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Lessig, we will forward that motion on to council at the... To be on their earliest possible agenda. I do not know...
It'll be on the 14th.
I have it on good authority that it will be on the 14th.
That authority is solid there.
I would think so.
Well, thank you very much, and I look forward to serving. Is there anything coming up in the near future that you know of?
That's the one thing that's always fun about this board, is you never know what's going to be coming up until you get that agenda.
I like surprises. Well, not some of them.
Sometimes we know... Sometimes we know in advance, but...
We have nothing pending either.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any items that are pending before the board.
Anything I can do to learn or catch up? Should I read the zoning ordinances in my spare time? I do this for fun, so.
Okay. Yeah, certainly you can... There is a section...
I will read... You know what? That's the first thing I'll read is I'll read the master plan.
The master plan, and there is a specific section within the zoning ordinance regarding the zoning board of appeals. That's where our authority and power comes from.
I will take a look. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business of the board. I'm not aware of any unfinished business that we haven't already taken care of. Next item is Planning Commission Liaison Members' Report. Mr. Farina.
We had a meeting, and we are working with the gentleman who built the subdivision below the city property here. He's trying to close out his site plan, and he wants to not build on one lot, and we're working with him to try and get a combination of the lot next to that lot to be purchased by that owner, and therefore would not be just an unbuildable lot hanging out there. And that was the majority of what we took up the last meeting.
Okay.
Where's this at? Right below...
South of...
South of this here.
The streets, I believe, are...
It ends at the BFW Hall.
Yeah.
And that's about it. And we had candidates for the planning commission also.
Did you want to say anything about this document?
Oh, well, I think it was in our last minutes, but I... This has been approved by the city council and been adopted. I don't know whether you guys have read this, but this is the basis of where our government in the city and the planning commission want the city to go. So I think all of our decisions should be tempered by this and where this will lead us. There's a lot of very hard work was put into looking at this. One of the things you might want to look at is the resurrection of the downtown development district. And I'm going to wait for another month or so, and then I'm going to approach council about it, because they are the ones that have to strike the iron, and maybe McKenna can get in there and push them a little bit also. But there's an opportunity there to become more... A more vibrant community with the resurrection of that. We're looking at... Next, we're looking at sign ordinances, updating sign ordinances to eventually try to get us to a better-looking city with not as many public stands, signs glaring at you overhead, so. But there are exceptions to that. And that's about it.
If you would, I have gone through the process of producing a master plan in this city and others. I know how much work it goes into it, and if you would, please extend my thanks and congratulations to the planning commission members that I'm sure did a lot of work on putting that together. Next item is public participation.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may. This is your moment.
Michael Lessig, 15201 Fairview. With regard to signage in the city itself, does the city have to follow our own sign ordinances and things like that, or can we do what we want? And I'm just asking that question because there are signs being considered for all the parks and entrances to the city, so I was wondering if there'd been any conversation about these new signs inconsistent with our sign ordinance.
That's a good question. Ask the attorney.
I probably... You probably had no idea, so. I just think it would be a good example if we were following our own ordinance, at least attempting to, when we are going out and spending a lot of money on new signs, but...
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
The only...
I just...
The only exception I would say to that is the Frazier sign ordinance does not regulate signs that are within the public right of way.
Okay. Yeah.
Street signs typically the, you know, you are entering Frazier or you're leaving Frazier or so forth. Those signs are typically placed within the public right of way, and they're not regulated by the sign ordinance.
But you want to kind of be considered.
But park signs definitely are on... You know, are not within the public right of way typically, and those, I believe, would be regulated by the sign.
It would just be nice to be start... Be a good example in the future, so.
Absolutely.
And the other thing about the master plan, I would like to say thank you for that. My first experience was in 2006, looking at a master plan from, I believe, 1990, and I said, what is a master plan? And I said, why is this one 16 years old? Because it doesn't... It didn't include our subdivision at the time, our subdivisions. And so I really am happy that that got updated and got done. Thank you to McKenna for all their work, and I agree that that's a good roadmap for the future, so. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the March 2nd, and it says 2021, but I believe it should be 2022, unless we're really behind in our minutes. Let me just double check. Okay, so the minutes themselves have the correct date.
I'm looking at the minutes, and I'm just seeing...
Minutes are okay. The agenda says 22. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. As submitted.
Yeah, a motion by Menendez, seconded by Farina to approve the minutes from the March 3rd, 2022 meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Minutes are approved.
Mr. Chair. What question? If we amended the date on the approval of the minutes, do we need to amend the approval of the agenda as submitted now, since I missed that?
We would likely need to amend the approval of the agenda if you want to amend it to a...
Recognize the error.
...date as March 2nd, 2022. Yes.
Okay.
Oh, March 3rd, 2022.
Yeah. All right. Do I need to make that motion now, then?
You certainly may.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the approval to reflect the corrected date on the agenda of March 2nd, 2022. March 3rd. March 3rd, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion by Menendez, seconded by Farina to note a correction in the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for...
I have a question for the lawyer. In the planning commission, you said that most of our votes should be roll call. Is that same here?
That is true for dispositive motion, like substantive motion, so when you're ruling, like when a petitioner is up, but on motions like these, roll call votes are outright for motions like these. Yep.
Because I notice the council never does a roll call vote.
Yeah, so I actually had a conversation with both Don and Clark about this, Mr. Nolan and Mr. Andrews, about this, and we came to the agreement that on substantive motions, roll call votes are appropriate, but for non-substantive motions like approval of minutes and agendas, non-roll call votes are appropriate.
Okay. That's aligned with what they told us also.
All right. Any other member comments or items of interest?
Yes.
Mr. Farina.
We have St. Malick's has their fish fry. It's again this week from 4:00 to 7:00. They offer fried cod, baked cod and shrimp, fried shrimp. It's very good, then you should try it. And the last one will be next week. We're having a going out of business sale for this year next week. We're all getting laid off after next Friday, so come by and have some fun. That's it for me.
Are you allowed to file for unemployment for a portion of your wages?
Yeah. I will tell you that beginning on April 22nd, that one, the Knights of Columbus, are going to have a fish fry for five weeks.
I wasn't for sure with the dates for this one. I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay.
Or not certain. Stand away from the competition by doing it after Easter.
That's right.
Yeah, that's where our grand knight wants to work at. He's secretary on the board of the club, St. Malick.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I move to adjourn. You said you wanted to get out.
I'm just waiting for a second.
Second.
All right. We have motion by Farina, seconded by Logan, to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.